Hafedé, bienvenidos al edificio del Congreso de Guam. El Comité sobre la Salud, el Pueblo, la Justicia y la Cultura está de vuelta después de la represión y estamos reorganizando nuestra audiencia hoy. Es el 6 de mayo, el tiempo es las 1:15, 1:13 p.m. En cumplimiento con la ley de gobierno abierta, las notificaciones para esta audiencia pública fueron publicadas en el periódico Daily Guam el miércoles 27 de abril y nuevamente el lunes 2 de mayo de 2022. También se publicaron a la red de notificaciones públicas del gobierno de Guam y esta audiencia fue transmitida en directo a través del canal de YouTube de la legislatura de Guam. También se enviaron por correo electrónico a todos los senadores y a todos los medios de comunicación de la media. Tenemos un tema de agenda hoy, y es el proyecto número 291-36 LS. Está patrocinado por Talina Cruz Nelson, Christopher M. Duñez, Amanda L. Shelton, V. Anthony Ada y Frank Blas Jr. Es un acto para agregar un nuevo capítulo 91 B a la División 4 de la Título 10 del Código de Guam anotado relativo al aborto, incluyendo abortos después de la detección del corazón del bebé sin nacimiento, autorizando un derecho civil privado de acción. Por favor, adheráis con calma a la siguiente guía de audiencia y reglas generales de conducta para la audiencia pública de hoy, que fue previamente proporcionada en las notificaciones públicas para la audiencia de hoy y en su registro. Pedimos que los individuos registren para proporcionar testimonio oral en la audiencia pública de hoy. El comité ha puesto este procedimiento en marcha en anticipación de un alto número de personas esperando para proporcionar testimonio oral. Los individuos que testifican en la audiencia de hoy también están informados de que se les concederán cuatro minutos para presentar testimonio oral y que las presentaciones en Power Point o video no se permiten y que el registro de testimonio oral es limitado a solo una fecha y hora de audiencia para que podamos garantizar la mayor participación pública posible. Por favor, noten que el testimonio escrito ilimitado puede ser enviado a mi oficina antes de la cierre de negocios el lunes 9 de mayo de 2022 o a través de correo electrónico a senatorterlahi@gmail.com o a la entrega de mano aquí al edificio del Congreso. Yo le exijo altamente que entreguen una copia escrita del testimonio oral que presentarán hoy si aún no lo han hecho. Esto ayudará con la transcripción requerida de esta audiencia y garantizará que sea exacto. Todo testimonio oral y escrito estará incluido en el informe del comité sobre el proyecto y será disponible para la publicidad en el sitio web de la legislatura de Guam. Todo testimonio para la audiencia de hoy ha sido disponible para todos los senadores y los medios y estará publicado en mi sitio web, senatorterlahi.com, a medida que el informe del comité se realiza. Los individuos que testifican deben ser reconocidos primero por la presidenta antes de hablar y comienzan al decir su nombre para mantener el registro. Los senadores tendrán la oportunidad al final de cada panel de hacer preguntas. Pedimos que sus preguntas y comentarios combinados y las respuestas sean menos de cinco minutos por panel. Esto se intende a reducir el tiempo de espera para aquellos que esperan para testificar. Las preguntas y el testimonio deben estar confinados a la sustancia o naturaleza del tema. La inferencia personal acerca del carácter o el motivo de cualquier senador o individuo testificando no se permite. De nuevo, me gustaría agradecer al público por asistir a la audiencia de hoy. Su participación y feedback proporcionados en esta audiencia pública es crítico a las deliberaciones que todos los senadores tendrán sobre este proyecto y las decisiones que tomarán. Una audiencia pública es requerida por estatuto sobre todos los proyectos considerados por la legislatura. Continúo firmemente creyendo que el proceso de audiencia pública es el estándar oro en cuanto a las audiencias se preocupan ya que permite que todos los que quieran proporcionar feedback hagan eso y este organismo es obligatorio para poner todo el testimonio y diálogo de una audiencia pública en el registro público. Por esto estamos teniendo audiencias públicas sobre este proyecto y no audiencias roundtables o informacionales. El comité ha otorgado 16 horas de tiempo de audiencia para este proyecto con horarios de tarde y noche para acoger los horarios de la gente lo más posible. Otros trabajos importantes del comité fueron retrasados para priorizar estas audiencias. Estos horarios eran desafiadores de adquirir debido a un heavy schedule de audiencias y reuniones presupuestarias de mayo a junio previas a la sesión presupuestaria FY23 que probablemente se llevará a cabo en julio y agosto. Un par de reuniones presupuestarias también fueron rearrangidas por el Oficio de Finanzas y Presupuestos para acoger nuestras solicitudes de fechas de audiencia y quiero agradecer al presidente de las apropiaciones. Finalmente, por favor, noten que estoy con calma consciente de que el tema del aborto es uno de los temas más divisivos políticamente y emocionalmente cargados de nuestro tiempo y que cualquier discusión, debate igual, respetuoso y saludable sobre este tema puede ser difícil. Hemos visto a lo largo de la historia de décadas de debate que cuando no se acercan con justicia, respeto mutuo y consideración, cualquier intento de diálogo saludable puede fácilmente cerrarse y, peor aún, comprometer la seguridad de todas las personas involucradas. Esta es la razón por la que he puesto mucho pensamiento y consideración en los protocolos para estas audiencias para garantizar lo más posible que facilitemos la oportunidad justa y igual para el feedback sobre este proyecto. Por eso le pido a todos los que están aquí hoy para proporcionar testimonio para hacerlo con respeto y con gran paciencia y consideración entre sí y les agradezco por eso. Quiero agradecer ahora a mis colegas, empezando con nuestro líder de mayoría, el senador Talina Cruz Nelson, nuestro líder minoritario, el senador Chris Duñez, el senador Chris Duñez, el senador Mary Camacho Torres, el senador Frank Blas Jr. Así que antes de que escuchemos el testimonio, voy a invitar al patrocinador principal del proyecto a introducir el proyecto. Senador Nelson, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. El proyecto número 291-36 LS es un acto para agregar un nuevo capítulo 91 Bravo a la División 4 de la Título 10 del Código de Guam anotado relativo al aborto, incluyendo abortos después de la detección del corazón del bebé sin nacimiento, autorizando un derecho civil privado de acción. El Acto del Corazón se modela después de la ley de corazón de Texas que ha salido ante la Corte Suprema de Estados Unidos tres veces. El Acto del Corazón de Guam de 2022 busca prohibir los abortos una vez que se detecte un corazón durante un sonograma o ultrassonido. El Acto del Corazón de Guam solo permite que las partes privadas realicen una acción civil en la Corte Superior de Guam o la Corte Distrital de Guam contra cualquiera que realice un aborto o induzca un aborto. La cantidad mínima de daños monetarios en tales acciones civiles es $10,000. El acto no permite que los funcionarios gubernamentales o funcionarios gubernamentales realicen una demanda. Esto deja la decisión en manos del pueblo. Ninguna sección de la provisión en el Acto del Corazón impone sanciones criminales o responsabilidad civil contra una mujer que ha tenido un aborto. Las únicas excepciones en las que se permite el aborto son cuando la salud de la madre puede ser arruinada o si su vida está en riesgo debido a la embarazada. Gracias. Y me gustaría agradecer a todos hoy y esperamos su testimonio y gracias por venir y tomarse el tiempo para dar el testimonio.
Gracias, senador. Bien, pasaremos al primer panel entonces y gracias por estar aquí en el tiempo. Empezaremos con nuestro ex gobernador Eddie Baza Calvo. Usted es reconocido.
Muchas gracias, Madam Presidente, el orador Teresa Terlahi. Muchos saludos especiales y agradecimientos a nuestro líder de mayoría y líder minoritario, el senador Nelson, el senador Duñez, así como usted, senador Blas, patrocinadores del proyecto 291 que estoy advocatingando, así como me gustaría agradecer al senador Torres. Vi en las noticias el otro día a uno de nuestros líderes electos mencionando que estamos entrando en épocas oscuras a causa de lo que ha pasado en lo que respecta a potencialmente Roe versus Wade. Yo intentaría decir que es completamente opuesto a lo que creo. Creo que es más no épocas oscuras, sino épocas luz y iluminación. La mayoría de los académicos constitucionales, yo sé que tenemos abogados aquí, miraron Roe versus Wade y de nuevo Roe versus Wade se basó en un tema del Acto de Privacidad. Y realmente sabemos, amigos, estos son dos temas. Número uno, es una mujer y la elección que hace con su cuerpo, pero también, ¿cuáles derechos, si hay, tiene un bebé sin nacimiento? Y si esto se mueve hacia adelante, habrá estados y territorios de esta gran unión que tendrán debates dentro de sus comunidades sobre dónde va esto. En algunos territorios hay medidas más estrictas en lo que respecta al control del aborto. En otros, hay una liberalización al respecto donde los abortos podrían ocurrir a la hora de nacimiento. También creo que esto es la luz debido a los avances que han ocurrido en la ciencia y la medicina desde Roe versus Wade. He visto algunos especiales y los dispositivos que detectan lo que ocurre a la concepción. Y fue increíble porque lo vi en pantalla a la concepción, la reproducción casi exponencial y aumento de ventas. Es como el gran bang, una explosión de la vida ocurre a la concepción. Algunos de los test que también han mostrado en bebés en el útero, no mucho más grande que mi dedo índice y su reacción a la manipulación y si es un objeto agudo que los amenaza y ves las acciones de este bebé sin nacimiento o la música suave que se escucha desde un dispositivo audio clásico y lo que hace a este bebé sin nacimiento. Los milagros de la medicina. Y estoy aquí incluso aunque soy cristiano y católico y creo que la vida empieza a la concepción. Lo que estamos viendo con la ciencia moderna y la medicina y con los avances en el cuidado prenatal y neonatal a los 22 a 23 semanas, en el pasado eso fue considerado inviable. Un nacimiento temprano, eso es todo. No había manera de salvar al bebé. Pero ahora con los avances en la medicina, están siendo salvados incluso en esa etapa temprana del proceso de gestación. Estoy aquí para abrazar la vida. Estoy aquí, tenemos este debate y estoy de acuerdo, Madam orador. Tiene que ser hecho con pasión, pero no con rabia y odio y maldad hacia aquellos que tienen puntos de vista discordantes. Está ahí porque esto es tan... y es controversial porque es tan pivotal. Una mujer y lo que quiere hacer con su cuerpo, pero entonces para aquellos de nosotros que creemos que este persona sin nacimiento es una persona y también tiene un derecho inherente a la vida. Voy a cerrar con ciertas estadísticas que me fueron dadas como gobernador y que me chocaron. Primero de todo, la última estadística dada, yo era gobernador de Guam. La mayoría de los abortos ocurrieron con mujeres entre 21 y 35. Interesante, más del 60% de los abortos eran mujeres chomorras. Y la razón por la que traigo este interés es porque he estado luchando por los derechos chomorros toda mi vida y lo heredé de mi padre y mi tío y mi gran tío, Tomás Anderson Calvo. Si las personas chomorras forman un poco entre el 40 y el 45% de nuestra población y sin embargo, los abortos están en más del 60%, entonces las personas chomorras son sobrepresentadas. El contrario, aquellos que hicieron los abortos de la herencia guamaniana filipina estaba en el 9% de todos los abortos. Ahora, los guamanianos filipinos forman el 30% de la población, así que eran underrepresentados. Y luego tuvimos el lado estatal y la demografía micronesiana y todos ellos... El estado estaba en paro con su población y con la micronesia un poco más arriba basado en lo que era su per capita en la población. La razón por la que encuentro esto muy interesante como alguien que está luchando por la autodeterminación chomorra y la pregunta que tenía conmigo dentro de mí, ¿no pueden las personas elegir extinguir su existencia y rendirse irrelevantes en su país? Y como gobernador también he visto, y espero no ofender a nadie, he visto a las personas ser procesadas por matar a un tiburón de mar verde o tomar sus huevos de esa especie en peligro. La más reciente en Simon Sanchez, hay una población de agujeros que está en peligro y están siendo protegidos. Y supongo mi último, Madam orador, ¿deberían las personas chomorras también ser consideradas personas en peligro y con eso se hagan protecciones especiales sobre ellos y todos los seres humanos? Así que con eso, Madam Presidente, Madam orador, levanto y apoyo. Por cierto, mi esposa, ella es parte de Regalo y hijas católicas. Ella también es una de cientos, si no miles, de personas que también son partidarias del proyecto 291. Muchas gracias.
Sítios Massey, gobernador Calvo. Ahora escuchamos a Abigail Nagengest. Nagengest, Abigail.
Espero que esté en mi cara. Bien. Hola, mi nombre es Abby y tengo 26 años y tengo el síndrome de Down. Cada niño es especial por muchas razones. La principal es que Dios hace a cada persona en su imagen y nunca hace errores. Desde la época en que nací, me dijeron que soy especial, no solo porque soy hecha pero un creador perfecto, sino también porque me dio un extra chromosome en cada célula de mi cuerpo. Se llaman esto condiciones de Down. Hay muchas personas en este mundo con la misma especialidad, pero algunas de ellas nunca se permiten nacer. Se abortan antes de que puedan respirar aire y antes de que se conocan a nadie o escuchen las palabras "te amo". Nunca llegan a saber el amor de su creador como yo sé su amor. Mis versos favoritos en la Biblia son los Psalmas 139, versos 13 y 14 donde habla de lo que Dios hizo cuando me hizo. Dice: "Porque tú formaste mis partes internas, me uniste juntos en mi habitación de mi madre. Te aplaudiré, porque fuiste un hermoso maestro. Son maravillosos tus obras, mi alma lo sabe muy bien". Estos versos me dicen que fui creado con propósito y que mi vida importa. Dios tiene una tarea especial para mí de hacer en este mundo. Sé que una de ellas es mostrar su amor a todos los que conoces. Todos necesitan amor. Estoy agradecida por la vida que mis padres eligieron darme. Me dieron una voz cuando no tenía una. Me dieron la oportunidad de ser yo. Quiero que cada niño tenga esa misma voz y la oportunidad de hacer un diferencia en este mundo. Por favor, no dejes que los bebés sin nacimiento mueran. Déjalos vivir. Soy la razón por la que el proyecto del corazón necesita pasar. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, Abigail. Gracias. Abogado Jackie Terlahi.
Hafedé, oradora Terlahi y senadores de la legislatura de Guam 36. Mi nombre es Jaclyn Titanot Terlahi. Soy la madre de ocho niños y la madre de 3. Testifico en apoyo del proyecto 291-36 en nombre de mí misma y de mi familia de 13 porque todos los 13 de nosotros existimos hoy porque nuestras madres dijeron sí a la vida. No sé si pueden escuchar esto.
Abogado Terlahi, las reglas no...
Oh, lo siento.
Sí.
Pensé que no había Power Point.
Sí.
Eso es el corazón de un niño. No es un PowerPoint, es un audio del corazón de un niño. Y te desafio a preguntarte la pregunta, ¿desde el sonido del corazón de un niño, deberías decidir si ese niño debería ser abortado? Porque el corazón de un niño de un niño de siete semanas y el de un niño listo para ser nacido no es diferente. Se escucha justo como tu corazón, mi corazón. No podemos negar que cada uno de los bebés, o no puedes negar que el corazón de este niño que escuchas es un indicador clave de la vida de ese niño, que la vida existe en el útero. Como dijo nuestro gobernador, protegemos la vida de los tiburones de mar. Podría ir a la cárcel por tomar un huevo de un tiburón de mar. Podría ir a la cárcel por pisar un huevo de un pájaro de coco, pero no hacemos nada para proteger la vida de los niños en el útero. Nací en 1974, un año después de Roe v Wade, en un momento en que mi madre podía haber elegido el aborto. Mi madre y mi padre eran jóvenes, tenían un matrimonio muy difícil y de hecho, mi primer recuerdo es de mi madre embarazada y mi padre y mi madre discutiendo. Su matrimonio fue difícil y a pesar de esas dificultades, dijeron sí a nuestras vidas. Y debido a que dijeron sí, estoy aquí hoy, tengo niños hoy y puedo proporcionar junto con mi familia un lugar para otros niños, para nuestros tres niños de crianza para vivir mientras sus padres no pueden cuidar de ellos. Todo de un sí, un sí de una madre, un sí de un padre. Vine hoy simplemente porque una de las preguntas que se me hacía fue, ¿por qué no otorgar ninguna excepción para el violencia y el incesto? La respuesta simple es que permitiendo el aborto de un niño concebido bajo las circunstancias de violencia e incesto condonamos la violencia, condonamos la violencia contra un niño. Al final, simplemente tenemos dos víctimas, la madre y el niño. No condono la violencia, no condono el incesto y ni tampoco la ley de Guam. Un hombre que comete tal crimen hechizo no es sujeto a la sentencia de muerte. ¿Por qué debería un niño ser sentenciado a la muerte del crimen de su padre? Ayer, un colega me dijo, un amigo dijo, pensaba que estaba equivocada que convencer a una mujer de llevar un niño es una carga inutilizada. He llevado 12 niños en mi útero y fue difícil, pero nunca una carga porque la vida de un niño no es una carga. La vida de un niño es una bendición, una bendición no solo para la madre, sino una bendición para la sociedad. La ley existente protege a nuestros niños sin nacimiento, pero no vamos lo suficiente. El Acto de las víctimas de violencia protege a nuestros niños contra los actos violentos de terceros. Nuestra ley de guardián protege a nuestros niños sin nacimiento para que puedan proporcionarles un lugar seguro para vivir. Este Acto del Corazón es el último paso en la dirección correcta. El Papa Francisco dijo que el marco de una gran sociedad es cómo tratamos a nuestros más vulnerables. Protege a nuestros hijos, senadores, eso es lo que os estamos pidiendo hacer. Ellos tienen el derecho a la vida. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, abogado Terlahi. Carla Haddock.
Hafedé, mi nombre es Carla Haddock y estoy aquí para testificar solamente en mi capacidad personal. Soy madre de siete, una devouta católica y una proveedora licenciada en la atención médica de la mujer. Nada es más importante para mí que proteger las mentiras de nuestros hijos. Pero mientras que personalmente soy pro la vida, creo que el proyecto 291 no lo es y por eso estoy testificando en oposición hoy. A pesar de afirmar que protege la vida, el proyecto 291 hace nada para garantizar que el feto vive un feto saludable y seguro fuera del útero. Simplemente manda que el feto sea nacido. Pero si la ley los va a considerar como seres humanos, entonces merecen derechos humanos. ¿Qué protección tiene este proyecto para el bebé nacido con una adicción a metil debido a la exposición a sustancias prenatal? ¿No da daño a la vida de un feto? ¿Vas a penalizar a la madre por no buscar tratamiento medicinal? ¿Dónde está la provisión que hace que el cuidado infantil sea más accesible? Si los miembros de la familia niegan de cuidar de un bebé nacido de violencia, ¿quién lo cuidará? ¿O esperas que otra madre se refugie en nuestro sistema de cuidado de crianza? ¿Dónde en el proyecto se expande la fija de la maternidad? ¿Cómo estamos ayudando a la mujer sola que necesita una cita prenatal pero no puede permitirse perder trabajo? Los partidarios del proyecto pueden argumentar que estas cuestiones deberían ser trastilladas separadamente y aparte del proyecto 291 que al aumentar estas preocupaciones es una redacción a la última santidad de la vida humana. Pero, ¿cómo podemos defender la vida si no discutimos los problemas reales que suceden después del nacimiento? ¿Y cómo podemos forzar a una mujer a llevar una embarazada sin abordar los factores que contribuyeron a ello en primer lugar? El proyecto 291 se vuelve aún más alarmante cuando se considera la investigación y datos actuales sobre la salud maternal y infantil de Guam. Según el informe de 2020 publicado por el Departamento de Salud y Servicios Humanos de Estados Unidos, más del 70% de las mujeres que tienen edad reproductive en Guam están en riesgo de una embarazada intencional. Muchos factores, tanto antes como durante la embarazada, pueden influir en los resultados de nacimiento saludables incluyendo el peso de nacimiento bajo y nacimientos pretermos. Lo sé personalmente porque todos mis niños nacieron prematuros y me pusieron en descanso en el hospital durante los últimos meses de mi embarazada. Como resultado, el cuidado prenatal continúa siendo un método crucial para identificar problemas de salud y permitir resultados de nacimiento más saludables. Y sin embargo, es increíblemente difícil para las madres de Guam recibir el cuidado prenatal debido a la limitada cantidad de proveedores OB en la isla. Solo obtener una cita es desafiante y eso es para aquellos con seguro de salud. Imagínate cómo somos indigentes, no seguros o underseguros. Senadores, la realidad es que no se va a deshacer solo porque pasamos este proyecto. Probablemente aumentará la demanda. Los datos son claros, los bebés de madres que no reciben el cuidado prenatal son más susceptibles de morir y el proyecto 291 hace nada para resolver eso. Le exijo, si dices que te importan la vida, entonces por favor enfócate en los problemas que están plagando nuestra comunidad ahora mismo. 成成为一个抚养父母，祝你好运，养育 month 2. Fixar nuestro sistema de carga excesiva, apoyar la adopción, promover la vivienda gratuita de emergencias para madres embarazadas, defender el cuidado infantil accesible, la fija de la maternidad más larga y la contracepción segura y confiable. Como legisladores, es vuestro deber abordar la salud y la seguridad y las necesidades reales de nuestros primeros. Eso incluye los cientos de madres y niños que sufren fuera del útero. Sítios Massey.
Sítios Massey, Dr. Haddock. Ashley Limley.
Madam orador, senadores, Hafedé, mi nombre es Ashley Limley y estoy aquí hoy para apoyar el proyecto del corazón, el Acto del Corazón de Guam 2022. Entonces, ¿por qué me importa el bebé sin nacimiento? Mi madre fue criada en una pequeña familia cristiana de sur, así que cuando descubrió que estaba embarazada a solo 20 años su reacción inicial fue miedo. Solo había conocido al hombre con el que ahora estaba teniendo un bebé y solo era una sophomera en la universidad. Luchó con los pensamientos que la mayoría de las mujeres hacen que se encuentren en su posición. Mi vida es terminada. ¿Cómo podría decirle a mi familia? ¿Cómo puedo ponerlos a través del vergüenza? ¿Cuál será mi futuro ahora? Después de recibir algunos consejos y sabiendo que tenía el apoyo del padre del bebé de cualquier forma, decidió perseguir terminando su embarazada. El día en que iba a la clínica, sin embargo, Dios intervino en su vida y estoy aquí hoy porque mi madre eligió la vida. Soy el producto vivo de una mujer fuerte que valía la vida. Soy el producto de una mujer sin自尊心 que decidió que el bebé que concebió tenía todo el derecho a vivir a pesar de sus propios miedos. Debido a que mi madre ha elegido la vida, he tenido numerosas oportunidades de viajar por el mundo haciendo ministerio y visitando diferentes grupos de personas. Debido a que mi madre eligió la vida, he llegado a trabajar con madres y orfanes y pastores en India. He llegado a hacer consejo y ministerio a los sobrevivientes del Holocausto en Las Vegas y Israel. Debido a que mi madre eligió la vida, un pequeño niño ahora tiene una mamá a través de la cuidad de crianza. Debido a que mi madre eligió la vida, me gusta y me gusta. Debido a que mi madre eligió la vida, ahora puedo vivir mi vida ayudando a los niños más vulnerables aquí en Guam que han sido abusados, abandonados o ignorados. Debido a que mi madre eligió la vida, glorificó a Dios. Comparto este testimonio con la permiso de mis padres. Mi madre dice, recuerdo despertarme el día en que planeaba ir a la clínica y me pregunté a mí mismo, ¿por qué estoy haciendo esto? Dijo que todas las razones que podía pensar fueron puramente egoístas y que no era lo suficientemente bueno como para no dejar que este niño viviera. Estoy agradecida de ser el producto de fuerte, capaz y... I am grateful to be the product of strong, capable, and most of all, selfless parents who together chose life. I value life differently, knowing this testimony of my conception. I value life because I was given the chance to live. The things that I have experienced, the life that I have lived, the accomplishments that I've gotten to make would not have happened if God did not intervene in my mother's life on that day. I value life because every child is worthy and has opportunity to impact their communities. Working at Harvest House, I daily see children who've been forgotten, abused, neglected, or are unwanted by their biological families. Does that make them have no value or no worth? Absolutely not. From the moment that these children enter into our doors at Harvest House, we work hard to affirm to them that they are worthy of love and respect regardless of what they've experienced in their life. Every moment spent with them, every piece of clothing given, every toy picked, every meal prepared, gives dignity to their little lives and shows them that they are loved, they are worthy. I, along with our team at Harvest House, believe that every child, whether abused or loved, neglected or cherished, born or unborn, has value. I believe that God has formed us each with a beautiful purpose and meaning, to have impact. Children in the womb cannot speak up for themselves, so I, along with my parents and Harvest House, are proud to speak up for them, to say that every single child deserves the basic right to be born. So why do I care about the unborn baby? Because I was that unborn baby whose life could have been ended through abortion. And now I am here today, before you, with passion and purpose in my heart, to fight for every child's right to not only live, but to thrive, to love, to be loved, to live with purpose, and to have impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Bethany Taylor.
Dear Madam Speaker, committee members, senators, thank you. A famous quote from a Greek philosopher said this, courageous confidence in the intelligence of the community is a sure sign of leadership and success. We, the people of Guam, stand courageously with you in defending the life of the unborn, and know that full well this statement is true, that an injury done to the least of its citizens is an injury done to us all. My name is Bethany Taylor, I'm the executive director of Harvest House, a nonprofit to the foster community on Guam. I'm also a foster parent of over 40 children throughout my 13 years of fostering on this island. I'm providing this letter in support of the Guam Heartbeat Act of 2022. In the 13 years I've been a foster parent on island, I've used every opportunity I have had to speak out on the vulnerable children on our island. I've tried to help people visualize the faces, the names, and the stories of the abused and the abandoned and neglected children who have no voice to be heard. Today is like no other in regards to speaking out for the unborn, I believe, the most vulnerable. They are to be, they too are dependent on another individual to care enough about them to thrive. They too have a heartbeat that matters. They too have a future that should not be cut short because of another person's choice to do so. But let me tell you why. When I got the call as a foster parent that there was a failure-to-thrive 18-month-old baby who was abandoned, had no will to even know how to cry, had no energy to sit, to crawl, to even roll, had disfigured extremities, hands and toes, because of rat bites, he mattered to us. He even mattered to strangers, from social workers to hospital staff to church friends, and definitely to us as a foster family. Despite this horrific condition that he was in, he had a heartbeat, he had a will to live, and with the family to love and nourish him, he grew to be strong and healthy. He was given a chance. Even though he was abandoned, his life really mattered. What about my little three-month-old baby that suffered at the hands of abuse? He was shaken so violently and had emergency brain surgery to save his life. After surgery, the doctors told the social workers, this child was a healthy little baby, but because of the abuse will now have the life of a vegetable. He's cordically blind, has multiple disabilities and seizures. What do you think about him? Will a stranger love him? Is his life of any value? Most definitely. My family loved him, too. His life is proof that every life matters, even ones that are diagnosed with trauma or disability. His heart was beating, and he had a will to live. Today, he's a strong, athletic, funny 14-year-old. He is thankful that his life mattered enough for the doctors to save him, and mattered enough to a family that loves him. He's adopted in our family today. What about the very young teenager that was a victim of sexual abuse even within the boundaries of her own family unit? She then becomes pregnant and enters foster care. This was not her choice, this is not what her life was supposed to turn out, but the heartbeat of her unborn child was actually her avenue out of continued sexual abuse, what could have been through her entire teen years. Despite this horrific trauma she encountered, and despite her young age, she valued the life of her baby that she carried, and trusted and built a solid relationship with her foster mom to adopt the baby. What looked like hardship, looked like an impossible scenario, true love, ended up being one of her finest moments, to see the baby's heartbeat on a monitor turn to a cry as the baby entered the world. The one thing I see that share the same light here is that each have a heartbeat, whether born or unborn, whether abandoned or loved from the beginning, but their voices are sadly not heard. So today, I stand on their behalf to let their voices be heard through me so that it will not be said to me that I was silent when they needed us the most. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bethany. Lucia Atienza.
Hafadee Speaker Terlahi and senators of the legislature, my name is Lucia Atienza, I'm 20 years old, I was raised on Guam, and I'm a UOG student. I come to you today in support of the proposed Bill 291-36, because it protects and defends human life. A heartbeat at six weeks is undoubtedly a heartbeat in its strictest definition, even if it is coming from a valveless, primitive heart tube. The scientific community is still in awe of how such a marvel can occur. However, this marvel is disregarded as a point of life beginning since a fetus at six weeks is not viable. Forty-nine years ago, in the time of Roe versus Wade, viability was roughly 28 weeks. Today, it is 24 weeks, with some babies even being able to survive at 21 weeks. As you can see, the principle of viability changes based on human endeavor and medical advances. Viability is relative, not constant or absolute. A human's heartbeat is constant and absolute. It does not depend on us or our technology when a heartbeat begins. I urge the legislature today to pass a bill with constant and absolute principles as the basis of their decision. Elizabeth Cady Stanton, one of the main founders of the feminist movement in America, wrote, "There must be a remedy even for such a crying evil as this," referring explicitly to abortion. "But where shall it begin if not in the complete enfranchisement and elevation of women?" With this said, I also urge the legislature today to protect the rights of women, born and unborn. The unborn woman is already a woman, since scientifically speaking. She already has the XX chromosomes that determine sex in her DNA. Why should a human deserve more rights than another depending on the human developmental state they're at? Is it not what was also done during the World War II Holocaust, the Rwanda genocide, the segregation and separation of African-Americans? These are all historical injustices that could only occur when a whole segment of the population is dehumanized. A group of people decided when a person was not human, when a person was not human enough to be allowed to live, and that is what is happening today. With these unborn lives, they are being dehumanized based on a circumstance they cannot change, being alive in the womb. Suppose tomorrow, with the advancements of technology, the gestational age of viability decreases to a couple months. What will be the justification for killing all these lives on the principle of current viability standards? My generation will be accused of genocide, and I profoundly and utterly refuse to conform to the argument that a heartbeat is not enough to determine the humanity of a child. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lucia.
Okay, try that again. Hafadee, Madam, Honorable Madam Speaker, Honorable Senators, Dankulana Sidoos-Masi for listening and reading all our testimonies today and of the last couple days. I pray this finds you well. Guajasim Shelton, Hope Titanow, here to support and testify on Bill 291, the Heartbeat Act of Guam. Sidoos Masi to Senators Talina Nelson, Christopher Duenez, Amanda Shelton, Anthony Anna, and Frank Blas for authoring, co-authoring this very vital bill. I was shocked into silence when my friend Dawn flippantly shared, oh yeah, I have had four abortions. She is a flight attendant. I summarized that having children was not conducive to her career. She consumes much alcohol, likely to drown out the guilt, shame, regret, to say the least, she feels for her actions. But she won't admit these suppressed thoughts and emotional distress she's going through, nor will most who have had abortions. These are kept silently to themselves, buried deep within their hearts, but yet manifest themselves as anger, depression, bitterness, unforgiveness, hatred, malice. Today's Proverbs 6:16 reads, "There are six things which the Lord hates; yes, seven which are an abomination to him: haughty eyes, a lying tongue, and hands that shed innocent blood; a heart that devises wicked plans; feet that run rapidly to evil; a false witness who utters lies; and one who spreads strife among brothers." I want to focus on "and hands that shed innocent blood." Free from, according to Merriam-Webster's definition, innocent is, free from legal guilt or fault, free from guilt or sin, especially through lack of knowledge of evil, harmless in effect or intention. Could we all agree that the baby within is innocent? Those hands are not just the hands of the woman or women who choose to abort their blessings from God, not just the doctor who performs or nurses who assist in the procedure, but the men and fathers of those innocent offspring, human offspring, only if he too knows and allows the killing of their unborn child. He too shall suffer the same guilt, shame, and regret, again, to say the least. But guess what? And with all due respect, those hands would also include yours as well. Madam Speaker, senators, because if you choose not to pass 291, Bill 291, the Heartbeat Act of Guam, you too will be part of that above list of things that God hates. And know that there is hope for those who have had abortions. There is healing, forgiveness, in and through the love of the Lord Jesus Christ and the power of the Holy Spirit. And when it is all said and done, we ultimately, all of us, have to answer to God, regardless if we believe in Him or not. Please, I encourage you to choose to please God. I implore you, Honorable Madam Speaker, Honorable Senators of the 36 Guam Legislature, to vote in support and passage of Bill 291, the Heartbeat Act of Guam. Dankulana Sidoos-Masi, San Sidoos in Fennbend, DC.
Sidoos Masi, Ms. Titanow, Michelle. All right, I'm going to open it now for senators who have questions or comments, and I ask that you please limit your time to five minutes if you can. We'll begin, Senator Nelson, would you like to? Okay, so Senator Duenez.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair. Governor Kauai, thank you for your testimony. You mentioned Regalo House, and I know there's been panel members who have mentioned that taking care of those who are living outside of the womb is important. Can you just share your efforts, because I think we need to share more of these efforts and commend the efforts that you and the First Lady did to build the foster care home?
Thank you, Senator Duenez. In fact, when I see Bethany, it brings such good memories, and also the tragedy of being a governor, and I got to hand it to my wife, I think that first couple of weeks in the administration, and Bethany, there was something that was happening at Government House that there were foster kids there. And again, there was one of the foster children that had obviously some medical issues, had an oxygen tank, and my wife ended up carrying her for most of the day. And then, when, of course, she loves you, by the way, Bethany, you both have that energy, that vitality that is required, but after the event had ended, my wife couldn't stop crying. And then, of course, she told me what the impact it had on, you know, again, a foster child, and especially someone who had these issues and was so vulnerable, that, you know, that's the basis of starting the Regalo Foundation, where the main focus would be assisting whatever which way to assist foster kids, because how much more innocent outside of the womb is a child that does not have their biological parents? And that's why we, as a community, started to move forward, at least in our administration, to focus on ways to assist foster families. I agree with some of the comments made earlier, we got to increase, we got to help provide better services for our families here, whether it's that woman who feels lonely and is making a difficult decision, and she's economically indigent. And again, Bethany, we've seen some of the nightmare scenarios of some of these young ladies that were in a terrible, terrible situation. Build that assistance that this island is capable for, because we are a loving community. But again, as we focus on these most vulnerable, remember, there is one that is even more vulnerable. We've heard the horror stories of many of these women that have gone through such terrible tragedy, and we've heard them in testimony. But there's one individual, you'll never hear the scream or those cries, and that's the unborn child. I go back to modern technology, and it struck me because when I saw, and I'm not too sure what the basis was with what equipment was used, but when you see an unborn child, again, the size of an index finger, and then you see the needle, and what struck me the first time I saw that is, well, this obviously doesn't even look like a baby yet, it's so... But when the needle hit the child, the unborn child, the unborn child was revolted by it. It actually pushed back, couldn't run, but swam away. I don't know, you know, I wish I was a scientist, but again, I go back to modern science. If that wasn't fear of pain, I don't know what is. And I go back to the beauty of creation. Modern science and modern medicine are catching up, but the more we learn, we have to defer to what is precious. Life is precious, and the most vulnerable are those that cannot yell or scream. And that's why I think it's important for those that cannot yell or scream that we do everything we can to protect their lives so that they have an opportunity to live, to have a chance to make a life for themselves. I hope I answered some of the questions.
Thank you, Senator Duenez. Senator Torres. Senator Blas. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I did want to ask, what are your thoughts, and particularly Attorney Terlahi, I guess it's unfair, because I, since you have a legal background, I shouldn't pick on you, but I just wanted to ask, and certainly anyone else on the panel, what are your thoughts on the enforcement mechanism in this bill? Because that's something that, for me, I'm kind of mulling over, also just with the testimony that we heard the- testimony that we heard the other night from, from individuals that testified. The thoughts of paying money to someone who identifies, you know, someone assisting someone to try to get an abortion, or the penalties that we're looking at imposing through this bill on individuals that are involved in trying to facilitate or assist in an abortion. And again, I ask you first, but if anyone else on the panel, because for me, that's, I have no issue with the pro-life, I'm very supportive of it, that, that, I don't have any question in my mind or my soul with regards to that, but it's the, the enforcement mechanism that concerns me, and some may look at it as being quite barbaric in a way, of the penalties. Is that, do you think that those are the best options available, or are there other options that can be looked at to not facilitate, of course, but to minimize abortions occurring to the parties that, that may be involved in it? I just wanted to get your thoughts on that, and anyone else on the panel wants to respond to that question.
No, thank you, Senator Brown, for asking, because people have asked, you know, why the $10,000 amount? I've heard that, right? Are we awarding people for independently interfering in other people's lives? And I, I don't know where the $10,000 came from, but I suspect that the $10,000 is a minimum, because that establishes the jurisdiction of the Superior Court of Guam, right? Because if we look at the conjunction and the play, the interplay of different laws, if there wasn't a $10,000 minimum, then you would end up in a lower court, you would end up in small claims. But the $10,000 amount is also, it's a deterrent. The law typically creates deterrence, and that's essentially what the law intends. It creates a deterrent for people to correct conduct. And so a $10,000 amount, in my mind, is nothing in comparison to the life of a child. That society really needs, our society, Guam needs to decide what's more important, a $10,000 amount or a child? And when you, when you consider what is before us today in this Heartbeat Act, the Supreme Court of the United States has said it is constitutional. It is modeled after the Texas Heartbeat Act. Because the Supreme Court has found that it is constitutional, then I don't see any impediment in terms of its enforcement in Guam's courts.
I certainly appreciate your, does anyone else on the panel have any comment with regards to that question in terms of what the enforcement mechanisms are in this bill? What the penalties would be to anyone who would assist someone? I mean, you know, the, the argument was made, even if you drive someone to a location that's having an abortion, and any way of your business is assisting, what are your thoughts on that? Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Senator Brown, I too kind of had a thought about that, and, you know, thank you to Attorney Terlahi for that info. I think too, just as Ms. Haddock, Dr. Haddock was saying, we just need to kind of work on our processes, so that together we can come up with better, better processes and procedures, whether it's to prevent and/or to assist the women coming up or those involved, to try to not have the abortion, or try to give her, the woman, more options. Not sure if, we, we as the government, because there are a lot of folks saying, you know, the government shouldn't be involved, because it's a woman's private, it's her private decision. But I, I think too, that we just need to come up with something better, ma'am, and I, I, you know, I think collaboratively, Ms. Dr. Haddock, that I, I kind of agree with you on that, we need to, not just after, because we, we know, we have a drug issue on island, I mean, it's hands down. And we, we've seen, I have some babies in, in my family that have had Down Syndrome, and, and it's due to, well, and other things, due to drug abuse. And, and although the baby lived, but there was no other support system for that. But I'm, I'm, yeah, I wouldn't mind meeting with somebody to say, let's come up with some different strategies. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. You know, I do have to say, I have one little boy that keeps me very busy, and he's just one, my hats off to you mothers that, that juggle one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight plus, and, and still get up and go to work and do all the things that you do. I mean, I, I have to marvel at it. When you're a child, you benefit from it, right? Your parents are there taking care of you, but when you have that many lives to influence and take care of, and make sure they're safe and well, it's very impressive. So, thank you so much, and Happy Mother's Day to all of you mothers out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Taitsegui.
Estidus Mossi, Madam Speaker, and most especially for everyone who's here to testify today. Governor Calvo, it's always an honor when you come before us to speak, and what you said made so much more sense, you know, and especially coming from a man's point of view, not just from a governor, but from a, a man's point of view. So I greatly appreciate you being, taking the time to come out here. But I have to tell you, the one that stole my heart today was Abby. Abby, your testimony was amazing. You touched me, from head to toe, you touched me. And I want to commend you for having so much, you know, strength to be here today, and courage, and courage, most especially coming today and testifying, that it's amazing that you're here. And I'm, and thank God to that too, as well. So, looking forward to you on the next subject matter that comes up, Abby. You're very welcome to come to this session hall to testify anytime. Governor Calvo?
Just one comment, you're right, I'm a dad, you know, that's why life, I, I just got to say one thing, when I see a pregnant, my wife has been pregnant six times, there's something about the beauty of a woman who's pregnant, the glow. And I say, I think we should start focusing on, on everything holistically to help a woman. The gift of nature is given that only us guys can't do it. The ones that are responsible for humankind to move forward and advance in the next generation are women. And the most beautiful woman I've ever seen, obviously, is my wife when she's pregnant. There is something about the beauty of creation, and I just had to make that comment, because you're right. I am a man, and I can't have a baby. But you, you're blessed, thank you.
Yes, I think everyone who is a mother, and Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, and those who, who actually don't have children of their own, but care for other people's children, other God's children, you know, thank you so much, and Happy Mother's Day to them as well. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity, and God bless everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taitsegui. Senator Ada.
No questions, Madam Speaker, just to thank the panel for being here this afternoon to provide their testimonies to this body, and Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Sinagaste.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't have any comments. I've been, I've been watching the YouTube and listening to all the testimony, and thank you all for being here. I just got to get back to the budget. But, but I, I do agree with you, Governor. I'm a father of three, I have, I have 11 grandchildren and one great-grand. So I know what you're talking about, about the beauty of, of pregnant women and babies. So, and, and let's just take care of our, of our, our mothers today, all right? And Happy Mother's Day. Thank you.
Senator Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and giving testimony. It was very inspirational. Abigail, thank you so much. It was beautiful. It really moved my heart, and so I hope that it will also move others' hearts. If we can save one, then that's all that, then that's the most beautiful thing, if we can save one. And so thank you for that. And Lucia, thank you for your courage. It's very refreshing to see a youth at your age to come out and be a part of this dialogue. So thank you. Have a good day, everyone. Governor, take care.
Thank you, Senator. Again, thank you to the panel. I too appreciate the uniqueness of each of your testimonies, and it will definitely add to our debate on this bill, I think. So Estidus Mossi, and have a great weekend. Happy Mother's Day.
Happy Mother's Day, everybody.
All right, thank you. We're ready to begin. We'll begin with, thank you again for waiting and welcome, and we'll begin with Melissa Titano.
Signe Mossi, Madalou Hudson, Maninahu. Madam, Honorable Madam Speaker Terlahi, Honorable Senators of the 36 Guam Legislature, thank you so much for the opportunity to participate in this democratic process and to share my opposition to Bill 291. My name is Melissa Titano. I'm an assistant professor at the University of Guam, and my views shared today are mine and mine alone, and in no way represent or purport to represent the views of the University of Guam. Over the course of the past few weeks, the introduction of this legislation has brought the contentious issue of abortion once again to the forefront of our public consciousness. It is one that demarks great division in our community, inflaming passions, and understandably so. In some cases, bringing out the best in us. In some cases, bringing out the worst in us. Over three decades ago, anti-abortion legislation was introduced, and many women of, and many women of Guam found themselves in the same position of having to fight for a fundamental right, control over our bodies and the decisions about our reproductive health. We are here again, and I am actually very proud of all the young people who have found the courage and conviction to make their views known. This bill is, is an attempt not only to violate a sacred space of self-autonomy and self-determination, but it is actually also a threat to our community and to our culture, and one that tests the legitimacy and authority of this legislative institution. Will legislation truly reflect the will of the people, or the will of the elite, the few, the affluent, the powerful? Part of the challenge is how the debate has been normatively framed, pro-life or pro-choice. It was set up as a binary choice for a reason, and that reason is simply to divide us. In this framed, seemingly black and white argument, there's no room for gray area. Yet surely, many of those who oppose this bill love and value life with incredible vigor and have deep, meaningful spiritual relationships with God, and at some level are conflicted. And some of those in favor of this bill surely have compassion for victims of rape and incest, embrace democracy and freedom, and at some level are conflicted. Yet our precious island community has yet to have an opportunity for collective, meaningful, fruitful discussion and healing around the issues of abortion. The complexity is so much more than pro-life or pro-choice. The bedrock values that have sustained our community for thousands of years are the values of respect, compassion, and community. Ina fat maulik, ina goflii, zeninadahi. Bill 291, copied and pasted from Texas SB 8, contains none of these values, and instead is intentionally punitive, overtly intrusive, and through the opening of civil liability and a bounty of $10,000 on the heads of anyone aiding or abetting a woman who gets an abortion, further isolates mothers, daughters, nieces, cousins during a time when they need us most. Who will they turn to? Who will they go to when faced with such a crisis, knowing that they may expose their loved ones to civil liabilities? This legislation also lacks offerings of resources and support and compassion for victims of rape and incest. It is ill-spirited and lacks any expression of respect or compassion, whatever. Like many families, important decisions impacting our lives are never made by a single individual. It's not an individual choice. Abortion especially is no different. It's a collective process. Daughters talk to grandparents, mothers and fathers, brothers and sisters, husbands, spouses, partners, and primary care physicians. So in this respect, the bill not only seeks to rob women of bodily self-autonomy, but also tears at the fabric of our families, our community. As Attorney Vanessa Williams so eloquently articulated in her oral testimony, "We are not Alabama, we are not Florida, we are not Texas, we are Guam." And to endure all the crises of the past that our community has endured, we somehow reached a consensus that it is more important to care for one another than to win a debate, more important to embrace one another than to be right. Has this changed? The passage of this bill endangers not only our way of life, but would position us on a slippery slope. If the government can regulate our bodies, our bodies become commodities. Where does it end? This policy then would, there would then be policy that would be created to regulate women of what we can learn and what we can't learn. Will unwed pregnant women be forced into coistered convents and subjected to slave labor until such time that baby is born, stolen, and adopted, and whose remains will be unearthed decades later in mass graves? When will we start deciding that genital mutilation is necessary to create a moral and just society? This is the slippery slope, and they seem outrageous, I understand, but not impossible, not implausible. They happen, they have happened, they can happen. All we have to do is, is look at history. Once we take self, bodily self-autonomy from women and allow the government to mandate what she can and cannot do with those, with her body, those horrendous and seemingly outrageous impossibilities would require mere passage of legislation to become reality, and this is dangerous. I thank you very much, I respect the time, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much for your time, honorable members of the 361 Legislature.
Thank you very much. Viola Ekfaji. Or Joseph Ekfaji?
Joe.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Joseph?
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Speaker Terlahi, and all Senators present. I am Joseph Ekfaji, a resident of Agony Heights. I support Bill 291-36, the Guam Heartbeat Act. Is the unborn biologically human? Scientific evidence shows that the unborn is in fact a human being. We were once zygotes, embryos, and fetuses in our mothers' wombs. It is hard to believe that in this day and age, pro-abortion protesters steal whole science stating the fetus is just a blob of tissues. Not only is it misleading, but irresponsibly feeding children. but irresponsibly feeding children with false information. Theologically speaking, human life begins at the moment of conception. The word of God is the truth. Psalm One-Thirty-nine, verse thirteen. "For you formed my inward parts; you needed me together in my mother's womb." This wonderfully explains that the Lord is the originator and the owner of the unborn. Our Creator brought us all, you and me, into this world. We were indeed once the unborn our mothers chose to carry to term. May we all be grateful to our parents, especially our mothers, for bringing us into this beautiful place called Earth created by God. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers everywhere. It is appalling that at the helm of this government and the Director of Bureau of Women's Affairs are staunch supporters of women reproductive rights. Through their aggressive pursuit, the bitter fruit of unborn via telemedicine is now a reality in Guam. From January through March of this year, eleven chemical abortions were performed. Four days weekly, a small number of Catholic Christians, mostly seniors, gather peacefully in prayer to end abortion at three locations, namely in front of the Guam Legislature Building, roadside entrance to the Adaluk complex, and sidewalk-fronting Sawat Manyagu. We stand in prayer for the protection of the unborn and their mothers and for conversion of hearts from being pro-abortion to anti-abortion. May the sanctity of life be regarded by all as sacred, and only God, our Creator, can take it away. Um, Speaker Tulahe, may I request to yield the remainder of my time to my wife?
All right, we'll allow it. Viola Ekfaji.
Technology has always been my nemesis. Thank you. Before I read my testimony, please allow me to share this. And I know Sharon Malin has testified yesterday, this poster here, and I'm going to read it verbatim. It's short, and I'm going to just read it right now with this poster about those in support of this bill. Each organization, church, group, fraternity, et cetera, represents one-hundredths of names. This means that there are over a thousand-plus names into the thousands in this one ad of support for the Heartbeat Bill. These members do not think they have to submit individual letters when they were already pledged their support under their organization. Sharon and Malin, thank you. Good afternoon, Speaker Tulahe and all the senators here today. I am Viola Ekfaji, a registered voter in Agania Heights and in support of Bill Two-Nine-One-Three-Six. My testimony will be presented via two email letters I wrote. The first one was dated four-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. What prompted this letter? My husband and I tuned into K-57 after our Wednesday prayer to end abortion gathering in front of Adaluk, the governor's complex. On the air with Patty Arroyo was Jane Flores, head of the Bureau of Women's Affairs, discussing the scheduled hearing on Bill Two-Nine-One. Among other false narratives, Ms. Flores offered that roundtable discussions were needed before the hearing, along with a litany of the bill's dangers. Letter one dated four-twenty-seven, twenty-two. Hafaday Speaker and Vice Speaker. Looking forward to public hearing on the Heartbeat Bill. I will weekly stand in front of the Congress Building in prayer to save Guam's next generation I hope lands in your innermost hearts and consciences. Abortion pill, two-step system, is the baby's doom in the womb. That is the job of the first pill. Baby dies. Pill two expels the dead baby, and suggested by pro-abortion experts, flush the baby down the toilet. Don't look at him or her. Is this happening here in Guam? Jane Flores stated abortions are not done here. Not that we're aware of. You're about to be inundated with an army of pro-abortion proponents at four today. They do not want a hearing on Two-Nine-One. And tomorrow, we will be there outside this building with our rosaries to pray to end abortion and leading us, one perfect lady, Jesus's mother. Please let us have hearing on Two-Nine-One. Sincerely, Viola Ekfaji. And I'm grateful we are here today hearing this. Thank you. I'm going to read the second letter, which I will now read, explaining its prompting. Dated May second, twenty-twenty, and addressed to administration@gmha.org. Buenos, Lilian. I hope the familiarity of my greeting is acceptable to you. I am Viola Solis, Mary and now Viola Ekfaji. The nature of this email is driven by my desire to build and give oral testimony in support of Heartbeat Act Twenty-Twenty-Two. I have made several calls earlier based on the post article of today, May second, page five, Guam abortion services being performed via telemedicine. It was reported that medical abortions have numbered eleven from January to March twenty-two. I have the article. My first call was to Public Health Vital Statistics, where it was confirmed that, yes, aborted babies' reporting was filed there upon the information of the fetal demise provided to them by the hospital. About three weeks ago, the Catholic Pro-Life Committee, under the Archdiocese of Agania, in partnership with Adaluk Mortuary, gathered, I believe, fifteen miscarried fetuses from Guam Memorial Hospital and were given a beautiful, beautiful funeral mass for the infants. Since Public Health informed me that indeed it has on file eleven reports of aborted fetuses from the timeframe in my first paragraph to the burial service I just described, it is my prayer that these medically aborted babies or deliberate miscarriages were among the ones we buried and not flushed down the toilet or discarded by other inhumane means. Thank you for your attention to this. I am registered to give oral testimony in favor of Heartbeat Act of Twenty-Twenty-Two this coming Friday. I will welcome any refutation or clarification from you, but my testimony will focus on the unborn, whose lives, like yours and mine, began in our mother's womb at conception. To, to, to close, clearly I support and pray for the reproduced unborn in his or her mother's womb today and the reproduced unborn children yet to come, perfectly designed already by God. I would like to close refuting Jane Flores's flawed observation about the faithful, prayerful people she happens to come upon at Adaluk, Congress Building, or Sawat Manyagu. Yes, we carry our signs, our rosaries, our prayers to end abortion. She said we shout. She's welcome to join us next Wednesday and experience saying the rosary with morning traffic buzzing by. She finds our signs offensive. We have good, good, life-affirming signs. But maybe she's offended by one sign that reads, "Fenatsu fama lawan for future fama guun. Basta abortion. Let babies be born." I am for Two-Nine-One. Thank you.
Sidos Massey, Ms. Ekfaji, Mrs. Ekfaji and Mr. Ekfaji. I also want to apologize to Dr. Titano for not referring to you as Dr. Titano. Pauline Sablon. Turn on that mic, yes. Thank you.
Hello, okay. Thank you, Speaker Tulahe, for allowing myself and others to testify to show our support for Bill Two-Nine-One-Three-Six, to defend the life of the unborn and to be a voice for their precious lives. I would like to thank Senator Nelson and the rest of the senators who are supporting Bill Two-Nine-One-Three-Six. God bless you for all publicly taking your stand. My name is Paulina Sablon. I am a, I am a mother of two wonderful sons, an intercessory missionary, a resident of Guam, and a registered voter. Today, I am here to support Bill Two-Nine-One-Three-Six. I want to be a voice for the life of the unborn. I would like to share something that I wrote as if the unborn were speaking through me. I am not just a piece of tissue or a blob of blood. Instead, I am being fearfully and intricately woven together in my mother's womb. I am filled with living cells and a unique DNA. I am a human fetus created in God's image. I am sacred. I also have a spirit and soul. I have emotions and can feel love, hate, acceptance, and rejection. I am unique, and there is none like me. It is a miracle how God formed me. God, my Creator, put me together in my mother's womb. In your quiet moment, take time to do your research and listen to the recorded sound of the heartbeat of a fetus in their mother's womb. It is amazing. Although I am not able to defend myself, my heart beats, spells it out, L-I-F-E. I am alive in my mother's womb. Please think of the impact your decision will make. Your choice is crucial. If you choose life, there will be an inner peace knowing that you made the right decision, the right choice, and you will be blessed by God for making that right choice. The truth is abortion is murder, and those who choose that route will suffer repercussions, physical and spiritual trauma like guilt, condemnation, which can lead to despair, depression, and so forth. Each of you had a mom, and your mom made a wise choice to protect her decision to have you born into this world. I ask the same of you, to protect and defend my cause. My Creator has all my days written in his book. Don't abort his plans and purposes to give me a hope filled with future and a destiny. I may be your family, a relative, a friend, a student, a leader, a teacher, a senator, a mayor, a governor, a doctor, and other community helpers. I ask that you listen to my plea, to defend me, the unborn, and to allow me to reach my destiny. Make a wise decision today to choose life, not death. In the native tongue of the Chamorro people, hear the prayer for the unborn. Zuus un fatinas zu gitizen nanahu. Gev maulik ifinatenasmo. Taihenikuk zen tai chi. Imana i minaulik na finetanasmo. Zuus ekis gikurson mami. Gwinai zen itimanma fanyanyagu zen in adahi ifinatenasmo. My friend wrote that for me. Lord, you formed me in my mother's womb. Your creation is perfect, everlasting, and forever is the goodness of your creation. Lord, etch in our hearts love for the unborn so that we will protect your creation. In closing, this is my prayer for the senators who are still not sure about their decision concerning Bill Two-Nine-One-Three-Six. Father God in heaven, give these senators the fear of the Lord to listen to your wisdom and not to compromise, but to make the right choice to choose life by choosing to honor the unborn and support Bill Two-Nine-One-Three-Six and to allow them to live. Father God, you alone should decide when to give life and when to take life, for you are the Creator. For you, for you will hold each one here accountable for the decision they will make concerning Bill Two-Nine-One-Three-Six. In your son, Jesus's name, I pray. Amen. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing me to share my testimony. Sidos Massey.
Sidos Massey, Ms. Sablon. George Pareda.
Buenos en Hafaday, Madam Speaker and the August Members of the Thirty-Six Guam Legislature. My name is George F. Pareda. I'm a resident of Mingilo and a parishioner of the Santa Teresita Catholic Church and a registered voter of Guam. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to enter my testimony in favor of the sanctity of life. I know that this is a public hearing on the merits, issues, provisions, and directions that were crafted into Bill Number Two-Nine-One-Three-Six LS, Guam Heartbeat Act of Twenty-Twenty-Two. But I would prefer to leave that critique to others with more expertise in that realm. The only thing that I'd like to say in that regard is that I hope and pray that due diligence is paid to the proper and appropriate verbiage of the final draft of the bill so that it correctly serves the purpose for which it is written. What I would prefer to speak on, if I may, is the precious gift of life from our Creator, the Author of life. Only Almighty God gives life, and only God can take life away. It is an erroneous notion that we have the right to terminate the life of another human being, be it in this instance, one in a woman's womb in the case of the voiceless, the least of our brethren, or in the case of mercy killing of the terminal ill or the fragile elderly, or when a child is born with a mental or physical disability that would require a lifetime of personal and, uh, personal status, personal sacrifice and discomfort on his or her parents. These may, in some people's mind, be gray areas where the choice may be in either direction. But these are no different than in the case of the husband who consciously guns-down his cheating wife or the woman who willfully drives her vehicle after an evening of heavy drinking only to end in a fatal collision. These are all willful choices made with malice and forethought, concluding with dire circumstances. At times, it is not easy to do the right thing, but we should do it anyway. We should not deny the sanctity of life. It is too precious a gift from God. In closing, I would like to take this opportunity to wish all of our mothers, both living and deceased, a blessed Mother's Day. And thank you, mothers, for choosing life. Sidos Massey, Pareda, and Tenzin Muz.
Sidos Massey, Mr. Pareda. Maria Mafness.
Okay. Hafaday Speaker Tulahe and senators. My name is Maria Mafness, a pro-life member and prayer group leader. Thank you, Senator Talina Nelson, for your tenacity in introducing Bill Number Two-Nine-One-Three-Six, the Guam Heartbeat Bill Act of Twenty-Twenty-Two. And also to the co-sponsors, Senator Chris Duenez, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Amanda Shelton. Thank you to all our pro-life leaders and to all our prayer group members for their devotion and reverence efforts to this cause in protecting the rights of the unborn. As followers of Christ, we must do his will to protect these innocent babies. We just can't sit back and rely on others to do it. God has a special plan for each a heartbeat, and with his help, together, we can keep babies' hearts beating. Thank you, everyone, for your presence here today. It's a step closer to the reality that the unborn will be protected by law, and together, we can be the voice to the most vulnerable with the precious gift of life. Sidos Massey told us.
Sidos Massey, Ms. Mafness. I'm sorry, could you please tell me your name?
Victoria Roberto.
Okay, sorry. Victoria Roberto. Please proceed.
Hafaday Speaker Tulahe and members of the Thirty-Six Guam Legislature. My name is Victoria Roberto, and I'm in support of Bill Two-Nine-One-Three-Six, the Guam Heartbeat Act Twenty-Twenty-Two. Those who stands with God is of God, and those who don't is against God, the Author of Life. As brothers and sisters, let us stand united and stop the murderous act against the most vulnerable of our family, unborn babies. That's right. We need to stop turning a blind eye and closing our minds and hearts and call it for what it really is, the act of murdering unborn babies. This heinous act of abortion is being masked as women's rights. We no longer have a conscience of murdering babies, but trying to justify it as rights of women. Who will be next? Being an inconvenience as a reason to murder babies needs to come to an end. Our human society is spiraling downwards because we've become judge and jury in the lives of the unborn. We have no right to murder, but to safeguard, nurture, and raise the unborn to a full life like ourselves, as our Father, the Author of life, intended it to be. The unborn is always at risk. Let us not be silent, but be heard, and vote for the passage of this bill. For we stand for the sanctity of life from the womb to the tomb into eternal life. In closing, I'd like to share, published in the Pro-Life Reflections for Every Day by Father Frank Pavone, for today on May 6th. Quote, "The early feminist leader Elizabeth Cady Stanton said, 'When we consider that women are treated as property, it is degrading to women that we should treat our children as property, to be disposed as we see fit.' Authentic feminism is pro-life." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberto. Gregorio Calvo.
Greetings, Madam Speaker, chairperson of this committee, bill sponsor Senator Nelson, Senator Duñez, Senator Bloss, Senator Ada. I believe there was one more sponsor. Please forgive me, I forgot the... And of course, senators. I'm here to testify in favor of this bill. My name is Gregorio Salas Calvo, the eldest of 13 children born to Gregorio Costa Calvo, Feliz Tat Bora Salas Calvo. Thank God, Mom and Dad were pro-life. Our dad loved our mother, and Mom honored Dad. We all grew up in a safe, familiar environment, all for one and one for all. That was what was living in a large family all about. As back in those days, Chamorro families averaged about seven children in the 50s and the 60s, and then around the 90s, it was less than two children per household. And I shudder to ask for the average today as darkness continues to loom over our island. From my earliest childhood, high school, and young adult years, the Gorulena Calvo clan would gather frequently. Guam is an orally society, so there were many stories, many memories, and of course, sometimes exhortations. I recall some gatherings in which the elders, like Lenena Whitehead, Lenena Seguenza, or Uncle Pete, would speak a word like, "We just heard that our neighbor's daughter is pregnant out of wedlock, and we spoke to the parents last night, and they assured their daughter that they would help her keep the unborn to birth." Of course, they offered the help of our familia, our clan, and we all said yes. I didn't know what I was saying back then, of course. My parents did. But when a child was born with a disability of how, we would just come around them and played with them, be they our cousin, our neighbor, our friend, without any regard for his or her physical disability, sometimes even without understanding what a disability, a learning or behavioral disability was. We all just grew up together with no hesitation, no barriers whatsoever. Life was so simple back then. Can anyone explain how this present darkness has covered our land? At the age of 20, I married Irene Cardenas. We were born in the same day, same month, same year, so we were destined to get married. We went on to have two children, a son, Gregorio Tiger, whom we just buried two weeks ago with the peace of the Lord, which passes all understanding. He met the Lord at a young age and never walked away from the Lord. He honored us, and we have a daughter, Jennifer. We moved to California back in 1968 for college and work, and then slowly a disconnect from the Roman Catholic Christian upbringing enveloped us. We started going to church less and less, returning to our island and promptly engaging in politics, working for the legislature. I developed a workaholic lifestyle and start to drift away from my family. That was when Irene found the Lord. That month, November 1972, I too accepted the Lord, and change immediately came about. What was supposed to be a marriage back then of only five years will be celebrated today, May 6th, with our 55th wedding anniversary. Why this background? It is because of these changes in our lives from the inside the heart impacted how we live from that day on. Now, please note, we're imperfect. I have so many wrongs that needs to be accounted for, and we're doing our best. We still have debts to be paid. But almost immediately, in the same manner that Jesus loved us, our son, daughter, our familia, the Holy Spirit started moving and opening doors to love others and to share with them the gospel that Jesus died on the cross. We began to understand why Dad, as the village commissioner and later mayor, would help families in need, the benamko, the special needs, the orphans, the widows, the unwed mothers, babies abandoned, and it was because the scriptures admonished us to do so. Dad, in his last few days, he said this. He said, "Anything I ever did that was good, that came from God." And then it dawned on me that the only way that God, through, the Almighty God, through His Son, Jesus Christ, as the light of the world, will strengthen us to face the darkness as we carry this light of the gospel into the lost and dying world around us. And so we, as elders, begin must take our place. So in both our families, we have emotional experiences of the near abortions, a nephew that was supposed to be aborted because he didn't have complete fingers or toes. I just said to my relative, "You mean to tell me that if the baby is born without fingers, complete fingers and toes, then I cannot be an uncle?" And then she refused the abortion, and my nephew was born months later with complete fingers, complete toes. And then on another occasion, my wife traveled to California to assist a family member with almost the same predicament. Thank God, that unborn was allowed to live, and this nephew carries many memorable life experiences with the entire family. And there are more than a dozen or so that we can bring up, but it just... And so one of the things that I just want to bring up is that God is the giver of life. The Bible proclaims the sanctity of life, and that life begins upon conception. And so, you know, we began just kind of counting. Irene, I says, "How many have we counted, so maybe over all the years?" We stopped counting, and maybe 15 or 16 babies that were born and that were alive, because somehow we just spoke God's word to them. But I know that 15 or 16 is a far cry from the 33,000 babies aborted on this beautiful island for the last 45 years, since 1973. In contrast, it's so awesome that God would give us, simple people, His grace to share with a lonely, confused, pregnant girl that Jesus loves her and that the baby in the womb was loved as well. And this prayer constantly including girls, women suffering from depression from aborting their babies, and were delivered because of the salvation, forgiveness, and grace in the person of Jesus Christ. Now, I want to thank God for those in the medical profession.
If you could wrap up, please?
Yes, okay. In the medical profession, Dr. Shea, Dr. Duñez, Dr. Perez, and the nurses, of course, that didn't participate in abortions, but senators that I worked for that were pro-God fearing senators, I was honored. I even worked for Senator Elizabeth Arriola, who championed the most remarkable legislative feat today, of which there's existing law and legislation that is definitely for the protection of the child in the womb. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Seduzmasi. I think that concludes our panel, so I'm going to open it up for the senators, beginning with the minority leader, Senator Duñez.
No questions, Madam Chair. I just would really love to say thank you to this panel for coming today and your testimony.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Bloss.
Nothing at this time, Madam Speaker, but thank you to the panel.
Senator Brown.
I don't have any questions, but again, I'd like to extend my condolences, Greg, on your passing of Tiger. We spent many hours in this legislature together and appreciate your help and your advice over the years. Thank you for coming in. To all the panel for providing their testimonies, most appreciated. Thank you.
Senator Tite Segri.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, everyone, for coming today and testifying too as well. I wish you a great speed and safety out there, and happy Mother's Day.
Senator Ada.
No questions, Madam Chair. Just to thank the panel for their testimony today and presenting to legislature, and happy Mother's Day to the mothers. Thank you.
Senator San Auguste.
I have no questions, Madam Speaker, but happy Mother's Day, and thank you all for being here.
Senator Nelson.
Thank you, everyone, for giving testimony today, for taking the time out of your day to be here and voice your concerns or share how you feel. We appreciate that. Took some notes, Doc, to address your concerns as well, so thank you for your testimony.
Thank you all again for your testimony and for taking the time and waiting for us today. Very much appreciated, and please be safe and happy Mother's Day. Take care.
Thank you, Senator Torres.
Senator Torres. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, sorry, that's my alarm. Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, and good senators here today. I'm here to testify in support of Bill 291, the Heartbeat of 2020. It's a very difficult time right now, you know, for everybody and, you know, this, this subject is really tough to talk about as well. But just to let you know that I am a board-certified OB-GYN and I have dedicated my entire life and my entire career in women's health on Guam for over 25 years. That's a lot of time to spend in one single place to practice for, for physicians that's not really from here, but I consider myself here because this is part of my home. Since my arrival on island with the U.S. Navy, I've delivered about 10,000 or more babies and over 14,000 babies in my entire career, including Hawaii. I've also cared for thousands of women with a wide range of health concerns and have performed thousands of surgical procedures. In total, I have been practicing in the field of OB-GYN for over 29-plus years. The field of obstetrics is very unique and by that I mean when a pregnant mom comes to my clinic, we are not just taking care of the mother as a patient, but we are also taking care of the baby inside of her. So the baby, to me, is also a patient. In case of twins, then we are caring for three patients. Therefore, at each prenatal visit, we listen to the baby's heartbeat to make sure that my second patient or the third, in case of twins, are doing fine. Let me just provide a few clarities and education of what's being spread around. Over the course of my 29 years of my career in OB-GYN, I have not cared for a woman, a mother, a pregnant mom, where I had to do an abortion in order to save her life, nor did I ever have to tell a mom she must abort her baby so she could live or she could die. The management of ectopic pregnancy is not performing an abortion. The management of abruption is not performing an abortion. The management of a pregnancy after six weeks where no detectable heartbeat is not performing an abortion. It is not true that no abortions have been done in Guam since 2018. And I know that for a fact because last year I had to take care of a woman and I had to take care of the surgery because of a failed incomplete abortion by a local Guam provider. It is not true that if this bill passes, it would hinder recruitment of physicians to Guam. Perhaps it's better said, if this bill passes, the recruitment of abortionists to Guam will be less of a priority. And you can ask me why it's less of a priority later. I hear some saying of those in poverty need abortions, but abortion really is not a solution to poverty. A woman who wants elective abortion must fly seven hours. There's a common sentence being used. What about a woman with GYN cancer? We also must fly off island for her cancer surgery or treatment. Some women with cancer have to fly not just seven hours to Hawaii, but 14 hours to the mainland. What is the difference? One is elective, the other is an absolute must because if she doesn't get treatment, she will die of cancer. If we care about women's health so much, why are we providing ending life, prioritizing ending life rather than saving life? It is without a doubt, once we hear a baby's heartbeat, there is life. Therefore, I support Bill 291 because where there is a heartbeat that I can hear and see, there is life. As a doctor, I'm dedicated to saving life and not taking away life, so I do no harm. If you stop that heartbeat from beating, that life ends. Finally, I do respect choices of women. And that being said, I've saved a lot of women's lives. I also saved many baby lives, so I have also respect for the life of the unborn, the baby. So just pause and consider other options before thinking about ending a viable life. If there is a heartbeat, there is life. Thank you. I'll submit my written testimony at the deadline. So I'm here for question if you have some, you know?
Yes, I very much appreciate your testimony, Dr. Shea. And I promised Dr. Shea, because he has patients today, that he, we would address his questions first. If there are any questions for Dr. Shea, I would like to take them at this time so that he can be released back to his patients. So Senator Duñez.
This is my, Madam Chair. Doc, can you expand once again? I know it was part of your testimony, but we've had some testimony from other physicians that this issue of physicians not wanting, like yourself and others, not wanting to deal with ectopic pregnancies because of the fact that this bill, they would be afraid of the consequences and the like. Could you, could you basically discuss that?
Sure. Yeah, the subject is ectopic pregnancy. Ectopic pregnancy is basically a pregnancy that really is non-viable. It's a pregnancy that usually is outside of the uterus, the womb of the mother, and usually the most common place is the fallopian tubes. And usually, I've taken care of many ectopic pregnancies in Guam. And when I read the bill, and I don't think the bill hidden my ability to handle and take care of or manage a woman with ectopic pregnancies. And I just took care of ectoprenic just last month and...
And Doc, so that's, you do that because the safety of the mother would be endangered, correct?
Absolutely. And that's under the provision of the bill on page five. That's already built into this bill.
Thank you, Doc. That's, that's my question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Torres. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Doc, I appreciate your testimony and thank you for taking time with me. You brought something up that actually interested, intrigued me in that you're confident that if this bill were to pass, it actually would not have any effect in as far as bringing physicians to Guam. Because I think one of the concerns, the scares is that it's going to scare physicians away. What is your take on?
Oh, no, it wouldn't because really the only effect on this is probably the abortionist. And if you really think about Guam as a whole, and I'm talking about specific to this island, and I've been here for 25-plus years. And, you know, from what I've seen on Guam and how to improve healthcare here, abortion is really not in the top priority for women. I've seen many women in worse conditions with cancer, with lupus, with autoimmune diseases that need to fly off island for treatment. So the bill itself is talking about particularly on abortion itself. So that wouldn't hinder other specialists from coming to Guam that help save lives. I think, I think it may affect the abortionists and they may think twice about coming here because, you know, they have to have more documentation, et cetera. I think that may be what they're referring to, but certainly not helping us recruit a gynon, not helping recruit rheumatologists, gastroenterologists, neonatologists. I can go on and on. I don't think you will.
Okay, so let me, help me to understand this. Abortionist or the doctor that specifically performs the abortion, that's the specialty that that doctor has?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Dr. Shea, I wanted to ask you, you'd mentioned in certainly all your years of practicing, that there's not been a circumstance where you've had to address the abort, not that you do aborting, but anything that would affect the health of the mother and the child. You've been able to have these successful pregnancies because the issue was brought up a couple days ago that perhaps doctors might be more concerned because of the requirements of this bill, that if they're trying to help the mother or save the baby, that that somehow may be interpreted as they're aborting a child. I mean, you certainly know the specifics of a child growing in the womb. And you mentioned in your testimony, you've never really had a circumstance, aside from the ones you just mentioned, our non-viable pregnancies to begin with.
Yeah, I think...
So if you could just elaborate a bit on that, just to give us more clarification?
Yeah, I think if I can readdress the question. The question to me is, is asking the health of the mother, whether or not if continuing on with the pregnancy will affect the health of the mother and what you do in those situations. I've had patients like that over the 25 years because on Guam, we have a higher rate of diabetes, hypertension, heart disease, kidney disease. But medicine have come a long way. And we, we're very lucky that, you know, Dr. Hirata, who is maternal fetal medicine specialist, he still comes and he's arriving tonight. And this weekend, on Mother's Day, believe it or not, we're working on Mother's Day to take care of mothers. And on Sunday and Saturday, we're taking care of 100 high-risk moms that's coming in for the ultrasounds and we're going to help them. We're going to help them carry through with their pregnancy. And many of them choose to carry through. And medicine has come a long way, not as 10 years ago where it's a death sentence. If you, hey, you're going to abort the baby. If not, you're going to die. I really have not come across that, you know, in my particular practice. And I've seen thousands of women in my particular practice. Even when I, you know, in Honolulu, when I was training, I've never come across a patient where I had to say, hey, you have to abort in order to, to... But what we do need is more specialists, neonatologists, for example. Women who is high-risk can deliver preterm. And preterm babies are those who deliver prior to 37 weeks technically, and some have to be delivered in 25 weeks. And just last week, the baby who I delivered at 25 weeks is alive and thriving today. The baby was one pound. He's 18 pounds today. So those are the story that many don't hear about. And, you know, thank God that, you know, that we have the technology. And we have to recruit those specialists who come to Guam to help us help women. So that's my point here is that the priority of care for Guam is not the abortion, but the other illnesses that we have that can save us more lives. And certainly, I think, when I brought up the issue about elective abortions, if you want to, you can fly off island, seven hours to Hawaii. But we do have women that can do that, and that's fine. But we have much, so many more women that have to fly off island for healthcare, you know, for autoimmune disease, for cancer especially. So those are the women that I think we should prioritize. And if we really want to advocate for healthcare for women, I think that's our priority.
The other thing too, you know, you mentioned about Dr. Hirata and the ability. I mean, we talk about the fact that we can hear a heartbeat. I mean, now with technology and the work that you and Dr. Hirata do, you actually can see a heartbeat of your baby.
Yeah.
You actually can see the face of your baby before that baby's even born while it's still, while it's still, you know, in your stomach growing. And I think that's just, you know, you mentioned the incredible benefits of technology and that's just the fact that, you know, when you're preparing for the birth of your child, you really get to see who that individual is long before, many, many months before they're born and even all the way down to their blood vessels.
Yeah.
I think that's just incredibly fascinating that technology has come to that level where you can visually, you know, see that amount of detail in your, in your baby that's still, still forming and still developing in your womb.
Yes.
Very impressive. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Shea, for responding to my question. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Taitigui. I have no questions. Thank you. Thank you. Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on my colleague's question, with the technology, she spoke about the heartbeat. Can you, do we have technology here to detect heartbeat at six weeks?
Oh, yes. We've had it for many years. Absolutely. We cannot just see the heartbeat. It's beautiful when you hear the heartbeat. And when we first hear the heartbeat, the first thing that come on the mom's face is tears. And it's not tears of disappointment, it's really tears of happiness. And that's the joy in my profession is that I'm privileged and I get to hold life in my hand every single day. And, you know, it saddens me when I have a stillbirth, really, really do. And we do our best to save the life of the baby, but those things do happen. But overall, I think technology is here that we are able to pick up heartbeat. And we're going to get better and better. We are.
And that's important to detect heartbeat as soon as...
It is important. And the reason why it's important to pick up a heartbeat at an early ultrasound, especially in the first trimester, from six weeks to 12 weeks or six to 11 weeks. The reason that's the case is that once you can pick up heartbeat at six weeks, the chance of you having a miscarriage goes way, way down, way down. If you don't pick up heartbeat at six weeks in the first trimester, more than likely that you're talking about either a bleated ovum or you will end up in a miscarriage. So that's so important to know that.
That's good. That's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Doc. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senators Sinagusti.
Oh, you can...
Sorry. Senator Nelson.
Doc, you did mention about the holistic care of the mother and a child. Have you ever taken care of a pregnant woman without consideration of the baby?
Oh, never, never. As a matter of fact, the mom usually pays the babies first before her own self. And that's almost every case that I've been through. The mom is always considered of the baby first. In fact, the mom will give up her life for the baby. And that's, that's my wife. You know, that's, every mother's instinct is to protect the baby. So there's no doubt that it's...
Thank you.
It's a mother's instinct, yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to thank overtaking Dr. Shea. Thank you for coming out and giving testimony from your, from your busy schedule. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I too. Thank you, Dr. Shea. Sismas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I too. Thank you, Dr. Shea. Sismas. We'll now continue. And thank you again for waiting. We'll begin with Donna Munya Kinata.
Good afternoon, Honorable Speaker Therese Terlai. Senators and ladies and gentlemen, for the record, my name is Donna Munya Kinata, and I am the identical twin sister of Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. I come before you here today as a daughter, a sister, a granddaughter, a mother of four, two I gave birth to and two I pokeside, and now a grandmother, who believes and respects life at the moment of conception. You see, I believe that in every instance of my life, someone chose life for me. I come before you today in support of this bill 291-36, and I am here to tell you why I support this bill. It is kind of personal, but I think it's important to share with each and every one of you. About 42 years ago, I had a lot of good things going for me. I was a student in school who had good grades, had a part-time job, even modeling, and I was looking forward to going to college. I was excited to face the world every day, thinking about the future and all the exciting things that would happen to me, who was young and free. But I was also quite young and naive. I may not have known about the birds and the bees because back then, things like this were never normally ever talked about. Like any curious young teenager, I tried to learn on my own. Not too long after that, I was faced with the fact that I was pregnant and also was faced with a scary decision. Should I have this baby? How long could I keep it a secret? What was I to do? I tried to ask advice from my sister-in-law, Marsha, and my older sister, but I did not or I couldn't get any of the answers from them without telling them the truth. To be honest, I was in a discussion with a couple of girls at school and some of our outside friends after school, and I was asking for a friend. What can my friend do about being pregnant? At that moment, I got the scariest advice. I was told that all my friend, all my friend had to do to get rid of that baby that was growing in her stomach was to fill the bathtub up with water, get into the tub, and while laying there, take a hanger and stick it up. And it would be like... And it would be like popping a balloon. It sent shivers down my spine. I was scared. I thought, oh my God, I can't stand the thought of anything poking me, or let alone sticking a hanger up there. At that moment, no matter what anybody else said to me, no matter how scary things seemed to me, I knew that I was going to have my baby, and I was going to have to say, uh, face the consequences. I did a lot of praying, and along the way, I knew that God was taking care of me. The moment I saw my son, I knew he was a gift, a blessing from God. I knew that a newborn baby is God's opinion that this world can live on. So today, ladies and gentlemen, I ask you to respect life, to respect the life that I believe, and I was taught, that at the moment of conception, life begins. I like to believe that life begins when God wills it. But if the parochial schools that I went to taught me that life begins at conception, science taught me that life begins at conception. So today, I cannot stand in any other position. And I'd like to tell you something real quick before I end. Back in January, I did not know this hearing was going to happen. I did not know I was going to be here supporting life. I just told my family, after telling them that the Bill Munya Foundation was going to raise funds for the Harvest House, I told them that I had to take a stance on something. And that stance was pro-life. In January, I was told, Mom, not in a political year. I didn't come here because it was a political decision. I came here because I knew in my heart, and I said this to my husband, that if I ever get the chance to stand up for life, I'm going to be there, whether it be by myself or anybody else standing beside me, I was going to be there. So ladies and gentlemen, I thank you again for giving me this opportunity, and I do support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. William Parkinson.
Hello, my name is, hello, my name...
Hold on.
Hello, my name is William Parkinson. I'm the son of Dawn and Marina Parkinson, and I'm a resident of MTM. I'm a son of Guam, raised in the public schools of the island my entire life, from J.K. San Miguel all the way to George Washington. I was raised a Catholic at the Immaculate Heart of Mary Church. My faith deeply informs my ethics, morals, and is an ineffable part of my makeup, so much so that I once considered becoming a priest in my youth. I even etch the symbol of my faith onto my body so that the whole world knows that Jesus is the one I follow. Peter is my Catholic name, and if the persecution of Christians ever returned in earnest with this brand, I could not deny Christ one time, not more or less three times as St. Peter did. I say these things so that you know that I do not say it lightly when I say I am a Catholic who supports a woman's freedom to choose and am opposed to this heartbeat bill. I emphasize freedom because that's really what this bill is about, the freedom of our women and the desire of the sponsors of this bill to take it away from them at the barrel of gun using the force of law. Among the sponsors of this bill, there are those that say they want to get government off our backs and out of our lives, except, of course, when they want to use the blunt, coercive power of government to inflict their theological beliefs on everybody else, especially in matters of reproduction and sexuality. Guam is said to have the second highest number of rapes per capita in the nation. The majority of the victims in 2021 were 17 years old or younger. Talina Nelson, Amanda Shelton, Chris Duñez, Toni Ada, and Frank Blas Jr. would compel them to hardship raising the children of the rapist. I will not forget those names, and anyone who comes today should not forget them either. If this madness passes, history will hold everyone who supports this bill personally responsible for every back alley abortion that happens as a result of this heavy-handed use of force. That blood will be on your hands because you denied them safe access to proper medical care. They argue that there is no exception because sanctity of life is sanctity of life, no exceptions. But that lie exposes the lack of principle when I hear Peter Scro, one of the drafters of this bill, publicly say, anyone can sue a person who performs or induces an abortion or intends to perform or induce for $10,000, except for insurance companies. It turns out legislation was not intended to affect insurance companies. Scro continued that he didn't see anyone prevailing if they tried to sue an insurance company, emphasizing that making insurance companies pay is not the intent of this legislation. Some of the sponsors want to hold everyone else to a standard they don't want to hold their own friends to. That should tell everyone, and most importantly, you other lawmakers sitting on the fence, everything you need to know about the bill, rules for thee, but not for me. $10,000 is 1,081 hours of minimum wage. Any law that has a fee as a punishment is only ever meant to hurt the poor. The rich will always secretly send their own children and mistresses to other places that allow it, while denying those not as affluent the same tools. A bill that pits neighbor against neighbor takes away women's freedom and only allows exception as long as the anti-abortion people say it's okay. Now, I will acknowledge, not all people who sponsor or support this bill are doing it maliciously, but I do think they are misguided. I do believe with members like my friend Talina Nelson, that her belief in this bill comes from a genuine Catholic faith we share. So let me speak to you now, now as a man, not as a politician, but as a Catholic to a Catholic. I would never practice abortion in my own private life, as it is consistent with my own Christian beliefs. I do believe the fight to save the unborn is a noble pursuit. But how you win the fight in the first place is just as winning as how you win it. Theological compulsion at the barrel of a gun will not work today any more than theological compulsion at the tip of a sword by Romans against our ancient Catholic ancestors did. You may feel emboldened in these times because our faith is the dominant faith in our island, but that may not always be the case. Mark my words, if you continue on this path, the tools you use to oppress others will someday be the tools that oppress you as well. The enforcement mechanism is an abomination of law. If you allow this enforcement mechanism to be part of our lives, you are opening Pandora's box. Today, we apply private whistleblowers on freedoms we don't like, but beware and tread carefully, otherwise those could be applied to laws we do like. The power of Christian faith was never in compelling anyone into obedience. The power of Christian faith lies in its kindness, integrity, compassion, and being an example that everyone else aspired to live up to, not because they were forced to, but because the example we set forth is worthy of emulation. I carry the brand of Christ not because anyone told me to, but because I was inspired by His example without compulsion, to fall in His footsteps, whatever manner flawed I can muster with the same grace, dignity, and kindness. If you want to help the unborn, then support them when they are living. Make sure they have adequate food, clothing, and shelter. Make sure they have ample opportunities to grow into productive members of society. Support the unborn by supporting them when they are living, because if women know that the church will be there for them, people will come back to the church willingly, knowing they have an ally. Those people will come back into the fold if they know that the church will be there for them. Coercing people with force of law and government to being more Christian will only turn people away from the church when those people might have otherwise come freely and willingly. I ask my fellow Catholics to look into their own hearts and recognize forced Christianity under threat of punishment is not the way. I want abortions to be safe and accessible, and without leaning on coercion, I believe the church can have a place as a guiding hand in making it a rare event, good works, and compassion. As for my fellow citizens, a new war on our freedom has begun. This is my call to action. We can no longer rely on the courts as they are dismantling Roe v. Wade. We must go back to our fundamentalist activist roots. We must make slow, steady, measured gains fought through lawfully and political engagement...
If you could wrap it up, please?
Yes, ma'am. We must stop this assault on our freedoms, otherwise the same people will continue to take your freedoms away at the barrel of a gun while carving out exceptions for their friends. I implore our lawmakers to reject this bill and stand on the side of freedom for women, because freedom for women is freedom for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Yolanda Carrera.
Honorable Teres Terlahe and all the senators of the 36 Guam Legislature. I am here in support of the legislation to protect the life that is unborn. I'm Dr. Yolanda Carrera. I'm a retired pediatrician and a mother of one. I had the privilege of taking care of many of our precious Guam children for almost 40 years before I retired, and they are precious. So today, my testimony is brief. I ask you to consider the life that you may be saving when you pass this bill, that life that I entrust to this legislature, the life that may be saved when abortion is removed from this island. And it's not just one life, it is the life of thousands of Guam citizens. Your people, protect them. They will be your children, they will be your grandchildren, they will be walking the streets of Guam unless you take that privilege away from them, if you make them into like a mist that never appeared before you. And I ask, I know that there have been many concerns brought up, but really, I ask that you consider, decide wisely, have a heart for your people, have a heart for others. And also, Dr. Shea left already, but I just want to share that he has a program in his clinic where people who are either unmarried or have unwanted pregnancy, they get free medical care, they get free delivery, everything is taken care of, including looking for adoptive parents. So I just want to let you know that there are things. And I, I also heard about the Haven Home.
Safe Heaven.
Safe Heaven, Safe Heaven, yes. So there are places where these women can go. Also, I want to thank you. I, I ask God to grant you the wisdom, the courage, and the discernment to do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carrera. Ms. Stephanie Lorenzo, Speaker of the Guam Youth Congress.
Sisus Mas, Speaker Terlahe. Before I begin, I just wanted to note for the record that I am testifying in my capacity as the co-founder and district deputy director of FAMALAN Rights. And before I begin reading this testimony, I want to urge and encourage all of you, our senators, to make this decision based on facts and laws and not religion. Hafaday, Speaker and Senators of the 36 Guam Legislature, I stand in opposition to Bill 291-36. I have chosen to withhold my name from the record because I am a woman who has had multiple abortions. I feel that I may be ostracized by an unjust society if I reveal my identity. Thank you for allowing me to testify and for my testimony to be submitted and read into record. I was not always pro-choice. I was raised a Catholic, and at the tender age of 15, I became pregnant, and my mother and grandmother, both of whom are devout Catholics, insisted that I have an abortion, but I refused. I had a choice then. I am thankful that at this present time, I still do. At 16, I gave birth to my son. I did not, and still don't regret my decision. My son has had health issues throughout his life, and I struggled as a single mother to raise him. I dropped out of college to provide for him, but he is otherwise a wonderful son on his way to earning his college degree. I am so proud of the man he's become. It wasn't until a year after I had my son that I found out my mother had harbored two dark family secrets. The first, that she had an abortion when I was only a year old. She did this for economic reasons. She was intent on only having two children. Anymore, and she knew her and my father would not be able to provide the life she wanted for us. Despite this, we still lived a modest life. The second, she had another abortion the year before I got pregnant with my son. We were told this was a miscarriage. It wasn't until later she revealed it was actually an abortion at the advice of her OB-GYN because of her high-risk pregnancy. Finding out about my mother's abortion felt like a profound loss. I should have had a sibling two years younger than me. Although I never expressed this to her or to anyone, for a while, I resented my mother. I could never understand the reasons why she chose to abort. After having two children many years later, I became pregnant for the fourth time, and for the first time, I seriously contemplated having an abortion. Circumstances were different. My husband and I were not making enough money to afford another baby or to qualify for welfare. We were barely middle class, and childcare was too expensive. I would have been able to afford a bigger car, more baby clothes, more formula, and I was suddenly becoming a mother. I never, I nevertheless chose to take the pregnancy to full term, but later found out it was an ectopic pregnancy. My left fallopian tube was removed along with the fertilized egg. This was technically an abortion to save my life. My doctors will tell you that this is not an abortion at all, this was a miscarriage. And for a while, I struggled with this loss, and later sought counseling for it, but I did not, and still don't regret my decision. It wasn't until a few years later, despite being on a form of birth control, when I became pregnant again... I apologize, I'm just going to skip because I, I am running out of time. Senators, these are the issues plaguing our island. It's not abortion. Children are being raped, infant mortality is high, housing is out of control, drugs and illegal substances are widespread, with the shortage of behavioral health professionals. We have no universal health insurance, high risk of diabetes, while our middle class is slowly slipping into poverty. If you want to give children a fair chance at life, if you really are pro-life, start by fixing these issues first. Sisus Mas.
Sisus Mas. All right. I'm going to open it up now for questions from the panel. Senator Duñez. Senator Torres. Senator Blas.
Nothing at this time, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Senator Brown.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Taitigui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Do we have your testimony, a copy of your testimony?
Yes, ma'am. A copy of the testimony will be submitted to the Speaker's office for committee report.
Okay, so, I just wanted to, because I know you weren't, you didn't have a chance to read the whole thing, and I'd like to hear the whole thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, everyone who was here testifying.
Actually, Speaker Terlahe, I have a question for the senators present today. Aside from being a part of FAMALAN Rights, I'm also an aspiring social worker. So in the next couple of weeks, I will be taking an oath to further serve and protect our community. And so my question would to be, you know, we've seen the news about sexual assault, especially for young children, for young women, for young girls, rather. So if an 11-year-old was to bear a child because of a sexual assault, I find it really disturbing and really heartbreaking that this bill does not exempt victims from sexual assault. Seeing as our island, and we've seen it across the news, this is something that is within the issues with, of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions. Happy Mother's Day, and thank you, everyone, for your testimony.
Just want to thank everyone for being here. I do want to say that you don't have to be religious to want to protect life. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for all of your patience and for your testimonies today, Sisus Mas. And if you could please submit those in writing, that would very much assist us. Thank you again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologize for going over time.
No, no, no. All right. So I had invited the Attorney General's Office to come again, as I had promised the senators that we could question after all the panels were done. And tonight's panels are full. And if there's anyone here who's scheduled to testify tonight, who would like to testify right now, we have time available, and it looks like it's going to be very tight tonight. So I would invite you to, to testify right now, if you're able. So I would invite you to testify right now if you're able. So the question, further questioning of the AG is, he didn't, no one showed up from their office, so not able. I just also, um, I guess, well, all right. So there, there are no other persons signed up to present further testimony. So the committee will recess this hearing and reconvene at 6:00 PM this evening to receive further testimony on Bill 291-36 LS. Written testimony can be submitted up till 5:00 PM on May 9th to senatorterlaheguam@gmail.com or by hand delivery here to the Congress Building. The public hearing is now recessed, and the time is 3:45 PM. Sisus Mas, Torres.